The actual user of this site yet and it's interesting to mention, I don't think there's any direct residential letters, they are down the street.
No, you can carry.
Yeah. And it is something that we can refine in terms of, you know, no idling of trucks, you know, they back up and they can't just leave them running. We're fine with that. And I don't know about the backup beep sensors, whether that's an auto broken wiring.
I think it's OSHA or something requirement because we've asked about that before in for other site plans as to whether or not that could be limited or completely deleted. And it's beyond the town's control. It's a state require, federal requirement, I think, federal.
But we can certainly limit idling of trucks in some cases.
Right, or time of day, or if it's not like four o'clock in the morning.
Do you have any sense whether this will be a 24-hour operation?
I don't. I think if they wanted that, they'd have to come back to the town.
No, no, you can do 24 hours.
Okay.
Operation.
Okay.
Yeah. So we don't have a specific user tenant for the space yet.
Okay.
Could we make that a condition if it is a 24-hour tenant to come back before the board if we had concerns about noise throughout the night?
It might be easier to address it by way of an hour limitation.
Yeah.
Like shutting it down from midnight to five.
Right, I mean, there are performance standards that any applicant has to meet, particularly in the industrial zones. And in the, if I can just, I know you're probably not just there yet, Teresa, but some of the questions that people are asking were addressed in the original decision and I gave you, and it just, you know, I just handed it to you tonight, I gave you a copy, I just revised it with, you know, updated plans, updated date, and I changed around a couple of conditions which I can go into in a little bit of detail later, Teresa. But there are conditions in here about they have to perform a noise study to begin with to determine what the ambient level is before they set up shop. And that way we have something to measure, well, we'd have to call in a consultant, but that's way, that way we have something to measure if there are noise complaints. But Michelle, where 24-hour operation is allowed and it's not something that they need a special permit by, it's not, it's not something that you, you can't prohibit that or restrict that. And then there, and then I also just wanted to mention, I mean, Michelle touched on it anyways, but the, I don't have a specific memo for you from the design review committee because all of their comments have been incorporated into the plan. The applicant, I think, met two times, maybe three, with the design review committee and landscaping and the colors of the building were discussed, you know, quite in detail. And then those changes are reflected on the plans that I sent out on Friday. You have just the two pages that were changed in front of you tonight, and I know Robert's already referenced those. But I can go through the decision after your.
Yeah, let me just roll them down this way.
No, thank you.
If you have any questions.
No, everything's been addressed that I was concerned about.
Okay.
The only thing that's kind of left standing is the hours of operation, where it sounds like we have no, it's within the bylaws that it's 24 hours within that zone. Is that correct?
Yeah. We, the, when someone needs a special permit or they're asking for a variance, you have some leeway to put in hours of, hours of operation or, you know, when the sign can be on or not on, or, you know, the idling trucks and so forth. And then through the earthwork permit, which the planning board used to handle the earthwork permit for industrial, but now it's specifically with the earthwork board, they can put on conditions about hours of operation for the construction of the, while the, you know, while the construction of the facility is happening.
Do you know if that happened?
Yes.
Did it?
Yes, actually, you want to talk about that?
Sure. The, this case, as you know, previously the earthwork permit, typical conditions were added to the special permit that were issued by the planning board. We went to town meeting and that's been separated. So in this case, even though they had an original permit that the town felt was still valid and they had posted their bond and they're under construction, they went to the earthwork board recently and got approval for this site again. The bond being estimated a number of years ago, 2005, it's been updated and increased significantly to cover additional work. And that condition was added as a standard condition as it always is already.
Okay, great. I know that there's at least one member of the audience who has a, you have a question, ma'am? Okay, state your, please state your name and your address.
127 Bartlett Street, North Borough. We might be the closest residence that we've ever been, I guess. Yes. Because of the, would you give me the, and that decision, Jenkin? So on that area, would you specify then where we are located? My main concern is the noisy, I mean, they already mentioned the noisy restriction is not, nothing that we can do at this point. That's my main concern, and the water, because we have well water, you already told me your deck of water goes out to the upper deck.
Up to that location and a little bit goes out to this, which then goes off, heads in the north of the direction.
Okay, where is my house? In that area? Is it, how far is it from my house?
You're at 127?
126.
Are you on the north side of Bartlett Street?
No, right on the Bartlett Street.
Yeah, we'll be on the north.
On the north side, it should be.
We'll be on the north.
So it's gotta be, I'm not even sure.
It's near Sturrock Brook.
Oh, Sturrock Brook.
The residential subdivision.
You passed Lyman Street?
Yeah, right.
The first, the residential subdivision just beyond Lyman Street, but on the other side, on the same side as yours.
It's, if you go.
Yeah, if you go even to this one, so, sorry.
I think this might.
This is Lyman Street here, so you may be either here or here. It might be even further.
No, I think it's further north.
It might be that. Because Sturrock Brook is further down.
Yes, Sturrock Brook is further out, but we are the closest residence.
You're on the corner of Sturrock Brook and Bartlett Street.
Yeah, right. So that's not affecting for, no matter what whatsoever, it's not going to be affected by any water.
You go up and then you go back down.
The noise, there's not the thresholds in the bylaw that you can't see. It applies to that. In terms of water. It goes back down and then it comes up again by the high school. Standards. So if you think that it's going to a water quality inlet prior to being discharged, they're infiltrating it as well, and it's on the roof runoff as well, so, you know, you can't, that's part of the purview of the groundwater advisory committee is to make sure that, since we are in an ambient level protection, don't basically dilute the water. So the mechanism's in place, you know, whether it's sediment control in construction, or whether it's oil grease separation on the property, you know, using water quality inlets, catch bases, infiltration bases.
Do you expect the water advisory to be that regular basis cell or whatever?
As part of the DEP's last DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, has a mechanism in place so that, you know, the owner of the property has to maintain all those water quality structures that are placed on property. And so, you know, each of those catch bases have to be cleaned on a yearly basis. Any oils, greases, or anything that may be captured within the water quality inlet, say, as well. So those, those are all stormwater treatment that needs to be maintained, and that's a requirement of the DEP is to maintain those structures.
So the DEP definitely go where, inspect once a year or how long?
The applicant is required to provide her annual report on the operation and maintenance of the stormwater system to, as a result of the order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission is the local board that institutes the requirements of the Department of Environmental Protection. That's what Pat Roberts referring to is the DEP. So they require the local commission to require annual reports.
So Teresa, if I can just add something about the noise. The, specifically in the town's bylaw, we do have a section about performance standards. And if anyone has their bylaws, page 47 that I'm referring to, but the, as far as noise, specifically with industrial uses, having an impact on residential uses, you're, you have a condition that is, you know, telling the developer that they have to be in compliance with this, that they're going to do again that ambient level study. And then by, by the zoning bylaws, they can go up to no more than five decibels over that ambient level. And so that's, that's very specific in the bylaw. And then if I can, Teresa, just before I go through the conditions with, Robert, you, I realize that in my draft decision, I had the old, I referenced the old site, the 31.8 acres. What's the acreage on this one?
It was about 10 that came off.
The 10 that came off on the ANR, correct? Yeah, okay. So it's plus or minus in the decision, so 21?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
1,073.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am, were your questions answered?
Yes, but about the noisy and even she mentioned about there's ambient supply and some numbers, but is there something that you can control to before they start the whole building construction is going on, or is it after everything is, or building has been done, there's nothing the resident could complain about because you have the North Borough by law, they did allow?
Well, no, definitely if, I mean, if residents, you know, think that the noise is excessive to them or have a particular issue that, you know, for some reason they're out there on a Saturday night or a Sunday or something, then you absolutely call the town hall, you know, it could either be my office or the building department during construction. So, and there's very specific hours through their earthwork permit when they can do the construction. And then as far as the operation, when there's a tenant in there, the, the bylaw is what governs them, that they're, we're requiring them to do a sound level test before they do any construction. And then, and then once, you know, the, we don't know who the occupant is going to be at this point. So we don't, we don't know how many trucks are going to be involved, but it's an allowed use in that zoning district. Off-hours, if there's an issue with, with noise, then you would call the police department, and then they would let us know the following day.
Does it make a difference if you call the police, noise has been already made? And call the police?
The police department are aware that they can't start before seven o'clock. And in the wintertime, some contractors like to start their equipment at six o'clock and let it run for an hour, 45 minutes, so that it's warm and ready to go at seven o'clock. That's not allowed. If you hear the trucks running before seven o'clock, call the police department, they will go down and tell them to turn the trucks off, they will let us know, and then we will follow up with the owner of the project.
Because that open 24-hour operation.
That's during construction.
During the construction, but the business is, the building is done, then there is restricted hours.
Once the business is done, then they'll have to work within the bylaw, but the bylaw does allow 24-hour use.
Kathy, can I ask a question?
So is it in the permit that they have to do the baseline noise test prior to, okay, so there will be a baseline?
Yes.
Ambient noise test done in advance of any operation being done. So if there's problem, we can go back and it could be tested again to see if it's above that 5% over ambient noise.
Absolutely. And we, and we've had, we have done that with one, two properties, I think. One property that I'm definitely aware of, this was several years ago, but, you know, it abutted a residential neighborhood and there were issues at night, and it turned out that it was just a matter of them changing some baffles on their, you know, equipment that was on the roof.
The air conditioner.
The air conditioner. But we were able to, you know, talk about how that it was above what they were allowed because we had done, had required that they do that, that level testing to begin with.
Sir, did you have a question?
Yes. I said, I have a question. From the left side, it's not in the by.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we planned, yeah, we planned that, yeah.
What is?
That's for excess soil, as part of, when they do the earthwork on this property, there's a lot of topsoil that can't be used because of the building and the paving areas. So that excess topsoil, they're stockpiling it, putting it over there and either transporting it off-site or they'll spread it on the unused area.
For that temporary reasons for the.
Any other question? You good? Okay. So we have, given that this has already been approved once and then extended a whole bunch of times, we do have a proposed draft decision already. So I think my recommendation, if anybody else has any questions or comments, that would take just a few minutes to read through it, and then it's plain and verbal vote on whether to allow the application before us, and then in terms of the specific decision that's been provided to us, whether we want to make any modifications to it aside from the acreage. And then Kathy can go through it with us and tell us specifically what's changed between the last time and this time, but let's just give it a quick read, okay?
I can ask for it about that one. 301. I was gonna say, I was like, is there groundwater? Was there any, no water, right? You just said no groundwater.
I didn't, I didn't remember. I did whatever today.
And you?
Well, it's from groundwater, but I signed it, indicating that they recommended approval with all the other conditions.
There's not, there's not.
That's all in here from the previous, same as before 2005. With the ambient condition.
Yeah. But the, but the anticipated groundwater flow to the north, that, I can stop there? That's, that's correct.
No, you can take the whole thing out. I think you can take the whole thing out.
Oh, take all, just take three out. I can just take three out. Yeah, okay.
I think you say about that, there's some more.
Right.
Okay.
That was before we had that. Yep.
There's some wording here about discharging to Bartlett, I think, at some point, going along to Aqueduct.
The, if you're, if you're looking at the third condition in the decision.
Yeah.
We're gonna take that out.
Okay.
Because that, they've, they've taken off that piece of property and put it onto another plot.
Okay.
If that's the one that.
I had it here.
Okay. I'm just looking to see if I say Bartlett anyplace else, Anthony. I think that was it, was number three.
You're talking about Bartlett.
What did I say, Bartlett? I don't know.
Okay, let's. Just make sure that Carrie and Anthony are done. One second.
I'm sorry, just Sturrock Brook located north of.
Which one, where's that?
3, that one that's.
They should come back before the board.
Great.
All right, on the first page, if you, or the.
Page two.
Oh, you're in there, there, oh, okay. I thought you were in the decision.
Okay.
Sorry. No, no, that's, yeah, thank you. Okay.
So, does the decision incorporate the prior findings of groundwater that were made back in '05?
Um, yes, yeah. Yes, and two, two things. There is, in, in the, this revised or this draft that you have with the, obviously there's a couple, the acreage I have to change on the first page. Second page, there's, there'll be a reference, I don't have a date in there, but there's a reference to review letter that was received, you know, from the groundwater, so that, that date will be in there. So that, that.
And that's the letter that we have?
Yes, yeah.
That's addressed to Rick, okay.
And that basically Fred references everything from the 2005 decision.
Okay.
And then, if you go on to page three, into the text of the decision, number three will be deleted, or I'm suggesting to be deleted. This was, this I took right out of the original decision, but since that time, part of this lot has been broken off, and so this, this lot before you tonight is not in groundwater one. And that's what condition three references. So we're gonna get rid of condition three. Condition six, the, this really only makes a difference to us in-house, but condition six is a standard condition that we put in all of the decisions about the as-built, it needs to be submitted to the town upon completion. And we just have revised the language since 2005. So this just reflects our updated language. So the intent hasn't changed, but, and then all of the conditions that relate to earth removal have been deleted because originally in 2005, I think, as we talked about in the beginning, the planning board used to, the earth removal was incorporated into the planning board's decision, but now it's separated out, and it's before the earthwork, they already have their earthwork permit, all those decisions, all those conditions have been covered. And then the, the only other change is on condition 17. Condition 17 talks about, requires some work to be done off-site on the street, on Bartlett Street and on Cedar Hill Street. And since 2005, we have updated, based on a plan that we received in 2015, we have revised and expanded a little bit what the applicant's going to be responsible for. So I have, the one thing I didn't add into 17 is just a reference to this memo that we have from VHB, which is their traffic consultant. So I'm just gonna make a reference in the beginning of 17 to this traffic memo, and then A through F is what came out of the traffic memo as far as what, what we want the applicant to be responsible for.
Was the traffic study done recently?
It was done in 2015.
It's not actually a traffic study as much as a recommendation of traffic line, striping and roadway approach. It's the intersection. We're concerned about the intersection being wide open. They're gonna narrow it up so that trucks can get in and out and passenger cars can get out in more safely. It's, it's been reviewed, it's, we're in basic agreement. We would want to make sure that DPW and police department are in agreement as well before we finalize it, but they've agreed to do it. And it's been kind of hanging for a number of years, waiting for this site to be developed.
Is, does this, will number 17 incorporate all of VHB's recommendations?
Yes, yes, it does, yeah.
Okay. But we're still waiting on approval from?
We will, because it's in the town road, we want to make sure police and DPW are in agreement that they all meet the town standards as well. So we will work with them in the town road, but this gets committed to them to do.
So.
And was this what we talked about way back when Federal Express was coming in, the work done by Cedar Hill and Bartlett, that intersection there? So this is sort of taking all that work that was supposed to be done then and actually saying it's gotta be done before we can give you?
Right.
Okay. And then, and I just want to reiterate, especially for Carrie and Anthony, that typically, you know, this is an unusual spot that we're in, and I know Teresa went through that as well as Scott did, but I typically do not hand you a draft decision before we've even had a chance to review the application. So tonight's unusual. Typically what the process is, is that, you know, you would go through the hearing process, and then you would talk about conditions, I would draft it, and then, and then you would, you know, take a look at it.
Right. So were there comments on the draft decision from Amy?
Yeah, I had a question on number five.
Condition five or finding?
Yeah, decision, it's under the decision, yeah. And it talks about toxic or hazardous materials, and I hate to like allow that to begin with before we even know who's coming in and the materials. Can there be a condition that if there are toxic or hazardous materials, it would have to come back before the board?
That's not how the bylaw is, is written. If the, you're incorporating a groundwater permit with them tonight.
Yeah.
And so the, there may not be any toxic or hazardous materials, but this is kind of a standard condition that we put in that if, you know, per the bylaw, that if it's determined that what they're, and Fred can probably explain this in a little more detail, but if it's determined that it's not more detrimental than what's already there, then, then that goes under staff review. If it's considered to be more detrimental, then they have to come back to the board.
Well, there's nothing there now, so.
That's correct.
Anything.
That's already in your bylaw.
They went to the groundwater advisory committee without a tenant. So they don't have any expectation that any toxic or hazardous material will be stored, manufactured, or disposed of on-site. So the groundwater's recommendation is that nothing be allowed. But in the event that something is required, once they do have a tenant that's accessory to the use, then the bylaw allows for the building inspector, the town engineer, and the town planner to make sure that if it is more hazardous to the groundwater, then they have to get a special permit to do so.
So it would have to come before the board?
It would come, it would, yeah, it would go, it would go to the groundwater advisory committee for a recommendation as to how to mitigate and handle that material, and then it would come to you for approval because you would be amending this special permit.
And that's the bad?
That's where.
I think it's the groundwater could say, no, you can't.
They could say no if the mitigation that's proposed to protect the groundwater supply from the storage or the handling of this material isn't to their satisfaction. They could say no, or they could make them go back and work it. It usually involves containment. If there's a 50-gallon drum, say, or 500-gallon drum, then they would require a containment area where if that were to spill, that all of that area, that material could be contained within the building and couldn't wash out into the parking lot and get into the drainage system, and that floor might be coated with this special material that couldn't be eaten through by whatever chemical it is. It also includes storage of any sprinkler water that might fall in that portion of the building if the material were to spill and the building were to catch on fire. So there's a, a lot of stuff that goes into the review by the groundwater committee before they would make a recommendation to you.
So, if it was a big warehouse, and they wanted to store all hazardous material?
Then they would have to retrofit the building to contain all that material, plus the sprinkle of water that would be, uh, put on the fire until the fire department got there, it might be half an hour, forty-five minutes. All the sprinkle heads would be calculated to the volume of water that would be dispersed. That, along with the materials that they store within the building, all need to be contained within the building. We recommend that they have a tenant before they go to the groundwater committee, because retrofitting an existing building after it's been built is much more difficult than doing it while it's under construction. This is not the case here. If they find a tenant before they finish the building, they could come back and modify the building at a reasonable cost. Either way, they're required to come back.
I just have one more question about, um, how you talked about how you're taking all the soil off and putting it on that area to the side. And it just reminds me of a company on Barefoot Road, you, you know where I'm talking about Fred, right? In Iron Mountain, where they have that big mound? I thought that was their septic system, but you said no, it's just?
No, that, that Barefoot Road project actually was, uh, two phases, and that material was pushed off from the first phase that went into construction, and was pushed off onto the other portion of their site, uh, to be stockpiled until they figured out what they're gonna do with the rest of the building.
So, is phase two not happened on that site?
Excuse me?
Is the second phase just not happened?
It has not.
Okay, so is there, does the, sorry, I completely interrupted you, go ahead.
But I'm just saying it's pretty ugly when you drive by it. I thought it was an enormous mound for a septic system, and it's just sort of sitting there, and it's been there for a while, so.
Does earthworks require that it, that this mound be taken down and spread?
No, not that it be taken down, just that it be stabilized so that it can't wash mud onto adjoining properties, and that site on Barefoot Road does have grass growing on it, it's stabilized, it's not washing away or causing a, a problem. The, the earthwork board is really about stabilizing the site, um, after construction. And if, in the bond that's required for earthwork, is it required in the event that the applicant were to completely devastate the site, cut all the trees, pull all the stumps, and then walk away? We have enough money to hold those, the material that's stockpiled, and hydrocated to the point it would be, take growth, and wouldn't wash off into the wetlands or a neighbor's property or back out into the street.
So, back to my question, which, we didn't discuss this at design review, and I'm sure that there would have been comments. Do you foresee that being high, or how high is it gonna be, like, or is it gonna be just Philly level, or is it gonna be?
So, the original, uh, the original requirements from the earthwork requirements in town is not to remove any soils from a property. One of the benefits of this revised permit relaxes that obligation, so that we can remove, um, uh, materials from the site, which we're trying to do to anyone, this is, you know, good usable topsoil, so we are trying to do that, uh, with, with the excess material, so that when we're done, it will be as low and minimized as, as possible. We need to stockpile there, because we are moving soil, and we're gonna have to put some soil back on the rest of the, the property as, as we complete the work as well. So, um, in the end, I don't know exactly what height we're trying to minimize that, and it will all be reseeded to regrow again and left natural.
The earthwork permit required, required, in the past, required them to stockpile all topsoil until the project was complete, and then it could be determined to be excess. The new permit, uh, that was issued recently for the site relaxed that a little bit, as Scott indicated, that there, they still have to stockpile it until the project's complete, or until a determination is made that how much they need to complete the project, and then anything that's excess above that, with my approval, can be removed from the site.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Questions on this side regarding the draft decision? Okay, Kathy, you have anything else you wanna add, before I look for a vote on this?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, and no other discussion by the board? Nothing else from the applicant?
Okay, so, we have before us a, um, application for a special permit for 301 Bartlett Street and a proposed decision with amendments. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the application and issue the decision with the discussed amendments? Anybody? A so moved would be good. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? No, all in favor?
Who made the motion, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Anthony.
We're going to give one of the new members the opportunity.
Anthony did.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor of issuing the decision? Any opposed? No. Okay, there you go. Yeah, you're welcome.
You can always blame the lawyers.
Yes.
For mucking up the works.
Thanks, Roberts. Off to another meeting. And we, um, before you start the next hearing, we, we usually bring up a recycling bin, so you, you don't have to take this home with you, but, um, you can just put it on the bottom of that tray tonight, I mean, cart, when we leave, if you don't want to bring home. We always have a permanent record here at the town hall.
Okay, so the next application is Public Hearing for Zero Bartlett Street, special permit, sign plane approval, and special permit for groundwater protection overweight district. The applicant again is the Bootyeros Company, and.
So, we have the interesting, uh, situation here of having a, a building project, where we're building this first warehouse building, and then following after that, we would be building another, another warehouse project as well. What, Dave, oh, again, Scott Weiss, the Bootyeros Company, Wayne Keefe, Karen, Dave Robinson, Maloney Major. This project, um, is located, uh, basically off of Hayes Memorial Boulevard in, in Marlborough, which is located here, off of the driveway that comes in, crosses the town line, and would put a, uh, oh, um, another warehouse distribution, uh, or like manufacturing facility in this location. This building's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet, just slightly smaller. The idea is to do the, basically the same design, although you'd never see the two buildings together, the same design, uh, as the first building, it's slightly smaller, and there's a notch on it, but it will look, uh, essentially the same. The project, this, this, well, this, uh, plan shows where Bartlett Street is and Hayes Memorial Drive. This is the 301 Bartlett, uh, building that we just talked about. So, down Bartlett, up Hayes Memorial, you would get to, uh, this location here, which is north of the Aqueduct. So, that shows generally the location, and then, uh, Dave can, uh, go through this project. This is a brand-new project before you, so this is, uh, first time you're seeing any of this. We're happy to go through all the details, um, and we do understand that there's still a couple of outstanding questions, both on groundwater and conservation, and we're not looking for you to make any snap decisions, uh, on this project, uh, tonight. So, uh, Dave, you take it away.
Absolutely, all right, good evening, everyone. Scott mentioned we're proposing a hundred and sixty-seven thousand square foot, um, industrial warehouse building. Now, unlike the 301 project, this project does access Hayes Memorial Drive in Marlborough, and we are also proposing, um, parking, a reserved parking area, truck and trailer storage area, additional dolly, uh, dolly pad area for long-term truck storage, parking to the north, and all of the drainage on site is handled by catch basins with, uh, deep stumps and hoods, and is discharged to these two large surface detention basins, which both have sediment four bays. With the request of the groundwater advisory board, we are, um, anticipating to install proprietary stormwater separators, um, to, to treat the water prior to discharge to the sediment four bays, which will then overflow into the basins. We, um, in terms of utilities, um, we're proposing to discharge sewer out to Hayes Memorial Drive in Marlborough, so not within, um, the town of Northborough. In fact, all the utilities are going to be derived from Hayes Memorial Drive. We're also proposing landscaping along the entire length of the drive, uh, trees, bushes, et cetera, to review with the, the, the design review committee, and along the front to provide relief from Hayes Memorial Drive, although it's not very easy to see the site, uh, from the road, it's fairly well tucked into the woods, um, on its own. I think that pretty much covers the general gist of what we're trying to do. Oh, yes, oh, yes, uh, good point. There's an existing force main, which we did go up to the field and locate last week, which handles the sewer flows from the Algonquin School, which is located right up here. So, we know where that force main is, we're most likely going to have to move it slightly to work around our utilities, put a new, nice, dedicated easement, um, around it, and then we also are going to most likely parallel that force main with our own force main from the building, as the building set back, set down about ten or twelve feet from grates at the road. So, we have to pump all that sewer up and into Marlborough. Just time to let go of the discussion. Any questions or concerns?
Fred? Any comments from engineering?
I have a letter for you from the groundwater advisory committee, um, similar to the other project. They did recommend approval, similar conditions. There was no tenant, and there was no specific toxic or hazardous material known at the time, so same condition, uh, that they'll have to come back. The committee does not anticipate that they would have to go back, although I, as a town engineer, and working with the DPW, would recommend that the hearing be continued so that we can work out the details of the sewer line. At the time the plan was submitted, the sewer line wasn't shown on the plan. Our estimated location of it, from what we knew, put it right in conflict with a couple of retaining walls and some cuts that would compromise the cover over that pipe, so we had asked them to locate it, show it on their pipe, on their plans, so that we could talk about how to best accommodate their project and keep our sewer line intact. They've indicated they located it, we haven't really looked at it and compared notes as to what should be done, so that needs to be addressed, um, before the plan could be approved, so that the plan that is approved is also the plan that gets built, and there's no conditions that require modification, that everybody has the same expectation of where the sewer line's gonna be. We are certainly, uh, agreeable to relocating the sewer line, as David had indicated. That is a viable option, because it's a force main, there's no specific grade that it needs to maintain, so that, I don't see that as an issue, just a matter of work out the details of where it would be. This, this project has not been to the earthwork board yet.
It has not, so it's still pending earthworks?
It will, it generally comes at the end, again, the previous project was rather unique in the whole process of the way we do things.
Given that the entrance to this building comes from, emanates from Marlborough, whose fire department services that building?
I believe the fire chief would say that, um, they have a, or community, um.
I forgot what they're calling it.
Mutual aid.
Yeah.
Whoever gets there first.
Okay.
Both would be called, but, they both would be called, but mutual aid would cover, um, a project of this size, whether there were fire.
Just to clarify, um, and you can point out where the city town line is, the entirety of the building is in Northborough, so for all the sort of benefits and obligations, go to North, Northborough, which are tax dollars. And I believe the discussions will, that, that the, uh, they feel that they have jurisdiction over the design.
I see Mr. Frederico shaking his head, yes, be right behind you, in agreement, yes, yes. Yeah, you don't wanna make him mad. Has the fire department reviewed the plans?
Yes, we, um, there is a.
I didn't see a letter from them.
There, um, do you mind?
Yeah, we do have a, um. Or were they happy?
The applicant has been before the conservation commission, um, that hearing's been continued. I believe that they are working with the conservation commission in Marlborough, because there is some wetlands, um, near the entrance to Hayes Memorial. Those things are all being worked on, so it's a natural thing that this might be continued.
Okay.
I don't see it here, but there, there is one, and we'll certainly send around copies if that happens. But there, there, there was, oh, here it is. If you're in his basement, in favor of it, or approved it.
I have reviewed the special permit sign plane approval dated April two, twenty eighteen, for the above-named property, and I have no concerns at this time.
And we, we did try to replicate the same kind of layout.
There's hydrants proposed at each corner of the building, it is a large building. Of course, more hydrants.
Resized access, uh, accessibility by fire trucks all over the ground, it can turn around into various areas.
So, um, the applicant came before design review, and, and this project was a little easier, because it was sort of a duplicate of 301. Similar building, similar landscape. Again, we asked the applicant to remove a lot of the trees from out back, because we're looking for clear, uh, truck radius to be able to, you know, for snow removal, and they figured that, you know, we were looking for in the worst-case scenarios about snow buildup there, and so we asked them to remove a lot of the trees, we asked them to put them out front. And then there were too many trees out front with such a small island, and we figured that was not really protective, so we worked on that. So, landscape we worked on quite a bit, and so it's out in the front, but not in the back, primarily because of snow removal and snow storage. Same identical building, that is gonna be at 301, so signage and colors and materials were all duplicated in that point. And then, uh, we talked a little bit about traffic flow on where would the trucks go, and there's really no determination whether they'd either come locally, because going down there, the most likelihood is they go down that, what's the street that they're coming in?
Hayes Memorial.
Hayes Memorial, and they'd more likely go out towards 495 than they would go down Bartlett Street to Route 20. So, we didn't really, and it wasn't within our jurisdiction to put a sign out on a, uh, request a sign out on a Marlborough road, so. Yeah, we don't know where to tell them to go, whether it was left or right, because if you tell them to go left, they go out to Route 20, and you don't really want them to go out to Route 20, if you tell.
Unless they're gonna take a right and go to 495.
Exactly, yeah, so that was one of the things that we didn't focus as much on, yeah.
And we, we also discussed, or one of the members pointed out, that, um, if they were to take a left out of the site to get to 495, you know, meaning go up Hayes Memorial and then, you know, take a right onto 20, with the new apex development, um, you know, if anyone has experienced that, there's, you know, tremendous amount of new traffic associated with that. So, we figured they're gonna learn on their own really quick that they're not, you know, they're not gonna go that way. They're gonna go out to 495 through the, um. Yeah.
Yeah. So, this site was not conducive to any type of signage for traffic flow?
But can we still put it as a condition, that they go out through Marlborough, so they're not, if they are big trucks, because we don't even know yet, that they're not going through Northborough onto 290, and, you know? Seems like all the trucks around there, we've said we didn't want them to go onto Route 20.
We can't tell them they have to use another town.
Yeah. You can't, we, we don't have the authority, because they're coming in and out from another town, they're, we don't have the authority, like, Northborough doesn't have the authority to tell Marlborough, you know.
Is that because the building was in?
Yeah.
You could certainly put a condition in, and then we could go to Marlborough if this was allowed, if Marlborough would say, no, all the traffic has to go either way. I, I think the state, the DOT, has some requirement, that you can't force.
Right, one town.
From one town to another.
Right, right.
Do you know how many truck bays there are gonna be? I know in the design it said.
You're unsure yet, so far?
I forget the exact count, there's probably about, uh.
We showed forty-eight.
Forty-eight, uh, was it that?
Thirty.
Thirty-eight, I think.
And then there's, there's ten back here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, against the building, well.
And that's not really a truck, and it's just trailer storage, but.
Yeah, thirty-eight bays. And then ten trucks, truck-trailer storages, but then? And then 10 trucks, truck trailer storages, but that number may change as the architect...
No, I think we were...
Is that the, is 38 the most that can be there? Is that your highest number? Okay. Okay. Any other questions on the side?
I guess most of my questions are, because I'm always conservation, I mean, a lot of it is wetlands and habitat.
Right, and there's still, all that's still open.
Right. The Design Review thought that both buildings, because they have a massive roof, would be great for solar, but we talked to the applicant, they are solar-ready and being built for today's standards, but there was no guarantee that there would be solar there. Yeah. And Bob wants to give up.
Just a point of observation. New building codes and the new land use codes. If you're building buildings of certain size or bigger, okay, they are required to be solar-ready. Now, the panels have to be installed, the roof has to be able to account for the added weight for the solar panels in the future. Some of the electrical conduits and things need to be kind of in place and ready, so that when it comes time, if the time comes to retrofit the building, you don't have to retrofit the building itself.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's a requirement, and it's generally built in to any new construction.
Any questions?
I, the only thing, so, I don't know the answer to this, and Fred, you might, or Kathy, you might, but I assume that there's weight restrictions on Boundary and Solomon that would restrict trucks from going up that direction towards 290? Or not?
Probably the bridge on Boundary has a...
The bridge on Boundary, I believe, is in Marlborough, and it was recently rebuilt, within the last three or four years.
That's true.
So there'd be nothing to prohibit them from using Boundary?
Not as far as I know, no.
So a lot of residents in that area use the stirrup brook trails. I'm curious, is there any impact on those trails? I can't tell with all the dotted lines. Is that something way off to the side?
So the trails, if you're thinking about the ones accessed through the high school...
That's right, yeah.
So the, the high school trails are all on the other side of this property, on the back of the high school side.
Got it.
Because there's stirrup brook, that's sort of separated, you'd have to cross the brook to get over here.
Got it.
You know, a lot of those trails are on the other side of the high school side.
Where's the nearest residential abutter? Do you know how far that person is?
You know, it's, it, there's really dense woods here, there's the stirrup brook, and then you have the Algonquin High School over here. The nearest abutters are...
Mr. and Mrs. Kemp.
I, I don't know, I don't know...
It's just a little bit further than...
You might have some distance measured.
It's...
Yeah.
So, again, this is a little bit further west, excuse me, east, than the 301 Bartlett, and you're up around the curve over here.
Yeah, we are not on Bartlett. We are like a little sort of a setback, so that's why we might be...
But the high school, the tennis court, the building itself is here. Just to give you a little bit of a reference, it's really white, but it's underneath on that image, a little bit. And all the fields and everything are all through here, and the trails are all back here. I know the...
Who's the brook's one?
The brook?
Yeah, where's the brook?
It pretty much coincides with the property line on the rear here, so it runs all, you can see it.
Yeah, because the front of my house is the brook, so it's running, so that means we are like the closest setback there.
I don't think the brook goes here. The brook goes further that way.
Yeah.
Beyond this. It doesn't come this way, but that's the brook, and then it goes that way.
Oh, it's just before Lyman Street by Bartlett Pond. You come out Lyman Street from Westborough, you take a left, and you go over to Culver there.
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead. You mean the, the notice of the hearing? I didn't, well, I don't know who, who else received a notice of hearing?
There were, there's several people, it's everyone within 300 feet of the site, so it included, I mean, I can, I can check for you, but yes, there's, there's many...
Yeah, that means we are in 300 feet.
Yes, yep. Yep, so there, yep, there were, there were other residences, there's residences on Lyman Street, and then elsewhere on Bartlett Street.
So...
That were notified.
So just to clarify, the 300 feet is based on this entire property, all the way from here, even though the development is, is, I mean, that's what, 700, 800?
This is, this is 600.
Yeah, we...
So it's thousands of dollars.
So what's, what's going to be on this end of the, a little bit like a medium shade?
That's actually a good point.
What's on that side? What's going to be on that side?
What's this?
There's nothing planned.
Too much further away.
All woods, yeah.
So you're not going to knock it down over the trees or anything? You were saying that it is for you to yours...
There's nothing currently planned there. We do own that land as well, but we're not at this point planning, and we don't have anything planned for that, for that location.
So the tree will be still there, or the trees will be still there?
Right, they remain, that's right. That's not a stockpile area or anything like that.
That's not to say that no development will happen there in the future.
Yes, that's...
What he's saying is, right now, there's nothing planned.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're a development company.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have a plan for it right now. It has been, in various iterations, planned for development, but we don't have anything planned at all.
There were 15 abutters entitled to notice, that received notice of this hearing. You're the only one who showed up, so... Right, so, so part of the first decision that we signed is going to require the company, the developer, to do some improvements at that intersection area. They don't, they're not going to be required to pave the entirety of Cedar Street, but at the very beginning of it, where the intersection begins, they're going to have to do some improvements right there. So at least the potholes at the very beginning of the Cedar Street intersection will be cured. As for the remainder of Cedar Street, we'll have to see. How much of that, is that all Marlborough, or is it South, it's Marlborough?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the majority, the...
Up to Scholastic.
Yeah, it's a majority, it's Marlborough.
It's Northborough, and then Marlborough, and then it goes into Southborough.
Right, right. Yeah, but then, that, you know, depends on, you're saying some part of the improvement, but what kind of real improvement could be done? Also, that's down here, Bartlett Street to Cedar Street, there's a down here. So if the truck runs down, then it's dangerous intersection it will become.
Right.
So that's a very busy area, so are you planning to put blink light, or are you planning to do something, or you just...
There's, the plans are traffic improvement plans. There's striping, some signage, a little bit of widening, guide rail near the intersection to make it, make more room for people who want to turn right, and people who want to go straight to get by. There's no traffic lights proposed, but there is widening and traffic improvement, signage and such.
So definitely there's a widening.
A little bit of a widening, so that cars can make that turn onto Cedar Hill, and then other cars can go straight. And there's a stop line and some, some striping that's going to happen in the road to make it more clear as to where people are supposed to stop, because when they come out of Cedar Hill, they quite sometimes don't stop till they get across the street. You can see there's a, there's been cars just run right across. So that, there's some guide rail in that area, as well as some signage and striping that's going to happen.
It's a part of the Marlborough and Southborough, Northborough, it's all part of it, but...
The first part, when you come off of Bartlett Street, is in Northborough, and it changes to Marlborough near that Scholastic Book Fair Building, which is the first driveway on the right as you head down Cedar Hill, towards the railroad tracks. And then, just beyond the railroad tracks and that light, I think then it turns into Southborough.
Yeah, that is Southborough, but we are concerning that, that area, even the Northborough part, it's really extremely dangerous, because just try to avoid the puddle. It's, it's seriously deep, and it's not, it's, it's just randomly everywhere, but there is no intention, no town shows to repair them. That means this trucking company, we believe, because of the trucking company, we have so many trucks are running that way, and, and it just got so worse.
Well, the town is responsible for maintaining its own roads, and the town, Northborough, I'm not sure about Marlborough or Southborough, but Northborough does have a pavement management plan, where all the roads and towns have been evaluated and rated, and they are on a list to be repaired as they hit a certain grade. And so that the town can maintain a minimum, you know, 75 or so grade on each road, and then the roads that are on the lower end, grade-wise, are repaired first, and the ones on the higher end are, are put off for further years. I don't know where Cedar Hill is in that, in that program. I can talk to the DPW director and ask him to take a look at the potholes and see if there's some minor repair that can be done, but it's not really an issue for the developer.
Right.
So when they clear, you said that you mentioned that it's going to be wider, it's a wider...
There's, there's a little bit of widening that goes with the Bartlett Street side, not the Cedar Hill Street side.
Yes.
Cedar Hill Street's quite wide at the entrance there.
Yeah, but from Bartlett to Cedar, the, the, you get into, get into the Cedar, it's like a tree side, there is a blocking, so you have to clear out a lot of the trees, so the, wherever the sedan will come out, we have to clear you to see the trucks.
I'm, I'm happy to show you the plan that we have in the office, that they've presented as a conceptual plan. I don't recall any trees being cut in order for the improvements to be made. Happy to show you the plan, but it's, it's not, I don't believe it involved tree cutting. It was more about defining the intersection, putting in some striping and some signage so that people knew where they're supposed to be, and more alerting of the traffic coming from Cedar Hill onto Bartlett, so that they, they knew there was a stop coming up, because speed is a factor and people are not stopping.
So you're talking about heavy trailers, so many heavy trailers, so I, I just want the, you know, the public safety, or the...
Well, we want the traffic to go to Marlborough, so we want to make it as safe as possible for those trucks to make that turn onto Cedar.
So in, in order for you to continue this, even though I don't think there's any outstanding questions from the Planning Board, but at the request of staff, you know, through the town engineer and DPW, you, you would need to determine what your summer meeting schedule's going to be. You know, typically you don't meet, you know, two Tuesdays in July, and two, June, July, or August. So, you know, if, if you want to, in order to continue this, you know, we've got to come up with a...
What's the ETA on completion with the other boards?
So we are going to continue the Conservation Commission meeting to your July meeting.
Right, the Conservation Commission meets the second Monday of each month. The applicant has some issues to resolve in order to get back to conservation. They're not going to be ready for Monday, which is the June meeting, so they're going to ask, I believe, for an extension to the July meeting, should be somewhere in July. Their meeting would be on July 9. Somewhere around then, I expect that the issues that you have with the sewer line can be worked out. Whatever's going on with Natural Heritage and Conservation should be fully resolved by then.
So you could look at the third Tuesday in July?
Is there any other, any other boards that we need approval from, besides Concon?
You don't, you don't need...
Groundwater, Design Review. Groundwater's not expecting them to return.
Okay.
Yeah, Design Review's already done.
And then Earthwork would follow Planning Board. They could apply, but Earthwork prefers to know that the project has been through your board and has approval, and that it's not going to change.
Okay.
So they could apply for a later meeting in July, or even one in August.
Did we rule out a second meeting in June, or would that be too soon anyway?
I think it would be, well, two things. I think it would be too soon, and, and I'm not, I'm not here the last two weeks of June.
Of June, okay, so we're looking then at when in July?
I'm, I'm suggesting the third Tuesday, because there'll be a Conservation the second Monday. And I did not bring my phone, but...
Is this 17?
No, if I can see that far, July 17.
17.
But I, you know, again, I have no idea, people's vacation schedules...
Oh, we're going to find out right now.
Right, and you don't have to stick to a Monday, I mean, Tuesday.
Tuesday, in the summertime, it's a little easier. Amy, July 17.
I can do it.
Michelle?
I'm probably good, yep.
You're probably good. Carrie?
17th of December?
Yeah.
Yes, I think I'm good.
Oh, you won?
Yes.
You're good? Okay, so July 17 works. Are you good with July 17?
Of course, and all the days of the year. But one day, and I have this meeting scheduled already, but we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay, okay. Well, it seems that you could send somebody in your stead, wouldn't be you, but it's fine, I'm sure they represent well, so, okay. So then we need to make a motion to continue the hearing from tonight to July 17, 2018, at 7:00 PM?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is there such a motion?
Make that motion.
All right, Amy makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, all right, excellent. You're good.
Thank you very much.
See you guys back in July.
Yeah, next week, or the week after, yeah. Yeah. If you have a plan, you want to send it to me by email, I can print it out.
I heard about that one.
Can I talk about that?
Okay, yes, we can.
Two minutes, we would have thought, sorry.
Okay. How many times? Two minutes? Okay.
Yeah, you know what, I'm, I, yeah, I'm at a conference tomorrow or Thursday, but I'm going to try to maybe get it done, get it done, and then get 36 minutes.
Great.
I thought you'd think that.
I'll, I'll text you.
From the time I thought, so I thought you'd think that.
Yep, okay, so, Michelle?
Okay, I just wanted the board to think about this, and we could discuss it at future Planning Board meetings, but as we're seeing this area being developed over on Bartlett Street, and I, I did talk about it to the board when Federal Express came in, and now we have two other properties that are being developed over there, and, which is a whole, this is very attractive for warehouses and for the type of facilities that want to come in here. I'd like the board to consider, and Kathy can guide us on this, about a letter to the Board of Selectmen about start thinking about streetlights. It's a really dark street. You can get solar-powered lights now, the technology's there. I know it has to go through the Board of Selectmen, but if we could be on a proactive approach about saying, "Look, here's an area of town that we just think is going to burst in the next five to 10 years, can we just start to think about streetlights out there? Look at the technology about solar-powered streetlights. How can we get applicants to be part of their, you know, maybe possibly the applicant gives some money, whether we can ask it for it or not, and applicant install a streetlight, like we talk about installing a sidewalk, anything like that. I think it's important for that area. I just don't want to lose the opportunity and get it all built out, and then 10 years from now, five years from now, we said we should have had streetlights out there. And I think with the technology here, we could get something that's solar-powered, that would not drain the town financially from it, and I just, I'd like to know if we could consider, if not this meeting, but in the next couple of meetings, a letter to the Board of Selectmen, asking them to give it some thought about future. I know we'll talk about it at the master plan, but this is sort of...
I, I can draft something for, for you, the board.
Okay, okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
You know how I feel about streetlights in those dark areas.
I know how you feel about it. I do, I do.
Do, I do. Okay, so we have some consideration of minutes and I know that you two weren't on the board, so I guess you get past. We have minutes from January thirtieth and February sixth in front of us. Have you guys both had a chance to review these?
I read them.
Okay.
Briefly, but I'm, I'm okay.
Okay. And Amy, did you have changes?
No.
That you haven't already sent? Okay, so.
These are quite detailed.
They are very detailed.
Yeah.
This is like a transcript of the hearing.
Yeah, this is actually really. As Debbie was printing them, she said, she's like, Elaine went a little crazy.
But you know what, this is helpful to, for us to write the design review standards for this too, to go back and what did we talk about? Remember like Judy was talking about from the design review committee?
Yeah, this was a good one to make very detailed, that's for sure.
Because it talks about what people's concerns are and stuff, so this is good.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the January thirty, twenty eighteen minutes?
I make a motion to approve, approve the January thirtieth, two thousand eighteen minutes.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Excellent. And is there a motion to approve the February sixth, twenty eighteen minutes?
I make a motion to approve the February sixth, two thousand eighteen minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
We're just as detailed.
Now, we've got two more identified here, do we have them?
No, you don't.
So we can cross those off?
Elaine, I had hoped she was gonna catch up on all of them, but.
Optimistic, but the ballgame got ruined. Got it. No A and Rs or lot releases tonight, no bonds tonight? Are reviewing the zoning amendments tonight?
Oh, I just didn't know, I mean, I just wanted to, you know, if you wanted to touch base on them, but just the process is, you know, we're in the middle of the process, so they've been sent to the other, you know, necessary forms that we have to fill out for the Attorney General's Office. That's been sent off to the Attorney General's Office and then they have ninety days to review them and get back to the town. And in the meantime, how zoning works in Massachusetts is that when it's approved at town meeting, it becomes effective immediately. And then if for some reason that the Attorney General, you know, disagrees with a piece of one of our bylaws or the bylaw in its entirety, then, you know, the day that we get the denial from them is, you know, we go back to the old bylaw, but. So that's in the works, you know, as far as with the AG's office.
And then eventually we'll get a new book?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yep, so that's all, I just wanted to touch base on that next.
All right, then we have subcommittee updates and appointments. So we're being asked to reappoint Fred Philcox to the Earthwork Board?
Yes. As far as the Earthwork Board, that board is made up of, some of the members are appointees from existing boards and then some members are at large. And so Fred Philcox has been the planning board's appointee for a few years now.
He's our designee?
Yes, and is interested in continuing.
Okay, do we want to keep him? We do.
We do. As long as he's willing to keep coming.
But he's an active participant looking out for the best interests of the town?
He is, he is.
So that's what matters. So is there a motion to recommend reappointment of Fred Philcox to the Earthwork Board? All right, excellent, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Aye. All right, community preservation, who's on community preservation? Is that Leslie?
Leslie was the planning board designee.
Okay. Do you have any interest in it?
And who, and whoever wants to be on CPC, we have a meeting Thursday.
Excellent.
Which literally will be a ten-minute meeting.
No, but I thought Anthony would be a good candidate.
Anthony, would you like to serve on the community preservation committee? Serve as our, the planning board's designee?
I would, I would.
All right, then, so we have a nomination for you. Does anybody want to fight for it?
No.
No? Okay, so is there a motion to approve Anthony? Do we have to do motions on this?
Not unless you want to fight amongst yourselves, but.
All right, so Anthony, congratulations, that job is yours.
Yeah.
Open space, who had open space?
I do.
Okay, you staying?
Uh, yeah, I do like it.
Okay.
Loves her job.
I'd like to take groundwater, if nobody objects to that. Excellent.
Good for you, Teresa.
Good for me.
One of those meetings.
I'm hoping they're at four-thirty or five-thirty in the morning. That's my best shot.
That's a good one. They're on Tuesday, the second Tuesday of the month. We try to fit it in between the two planning board meetings, which are typically the first and the third, and the fourth, as you know, is occupied by the ZBA, so Tuesdays are.
Tuesdays are perfect for me.
And we meet at seven o'clock unless we can squeeze in one at six o'clock. Try to move things along. Occasionally, there's a conflict with Board of Health or somebody who meets later and we will try to meet at six to get it out of the way before another board has to meet.
Got it, okay, that's fine. When's the next meeting?
Actually, there is no June ZBA meeting.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, I didn't know which board you were talking about.
We're talking about groundwater, so there's no June ZBA meeting, so therefore I haven't sent out the notice yet, but there's no June groundwater meeting.
Oh.
So if there's a, they do, they do meet as needed and if there's no groundwater hearings, if there's no petitions before either the planning board or the ZBA that require groundwater approval, they don't meet. Right now, it would be the second Tuesday in July, if necessary.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Are you staying with design review?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. We've finally decided that we're meeting twice a month. Meeting in the mornings, twice a month. We went back between mornings and nights. We're happy to be fluctuate if we want to do nights, but, yeah, so we're gonna, we've, we've scheduled at least four meetings throughout the summer because we're trying to work on the duplexes and we find that there are applicants coming before us and they take at least three meetings, if not four.
Okay, great. And Carrie, how would you like to do CMRPC? Do you know what that is?
I love it, Kathy, you explained it. And what, the meetings for those are typically?
They, they're quarterly, they, I honestly don't know when they, I don't know if they, I think they start their fiscal year like all towns on July first, so I don't know if they go quarterly from there, but we get notices and, you know, and it would come, whoever the rep, it would go to the rep also, but I remind people. And it's not, it's, it's not a lot of heavy lifting. Like I said, there are quarterly meetings, night meetings, and then there's an annual meeting. And.
The annual meeting includes dinner.
I generally try to, to make those meetings too, so it's.
Sorry, sorry.
No, that's all, I just.
Okay, so, all right, so you're good with that?
Yeah.
It's actually a really interesting one to, you, I learned an awful lot about process and what other towns do and how the whole thing just works. I'm serving on the CMRPC for a couple of years, so.
Now, I have a question, is master plan part of a subcommittee that receives appointments?
Normally it is, but it's already been filled, so right now, we've got three members, one of whom is George Pember, who is no longer on the planning board, but he was our designee voted on by the planning board. So I don't know that we should be revisiting that right now. I can, we should maybe talk to town council to see if he has to be removed because I know that that was something that he was very dedicated to, so.
Sure, I mean, I can, I can check with town council. I know that it, you know, it's typically worded that it's, you know, the planning board, it's usually worded like the planning board member or their designee. So, you know, so I, I believe you're covered. So, you know, as far as.
There's still a couple of open positions, I believe.
There, there aren't. It's, someone pointed out to me that it was still listed like that on the website. Those were from the Recreation Commission and the Historic District Commission.
Okay.
And, and so they've since appointed. The Historic District Commission is gonna share it with two, two people from the Historic District Commission, Norm Corbin and Alexandra, what's, Molnar? What?
Oh.
Yeah, is that Molnar? And then the Parks and Rec person is Dave Putnam. He's a member of the Parks and Rec Commission.
Is there any reason why we couldn't add a member? So we'd have three current planning board members on that committee and then George move to a resident position that doesn't exist?
There aren't any other positions on, on that board. I mean, when it was set up, the, I mean, if you want me, I'm sorry, I just kinda, okay.
I'll give you the evil eye when you're not.
When it was originally set up, it, I mean, the, the planning board determined that it would be a fifteen-member committee and with three representatives from the planning board, which is, which is very unusual. Usually it's one or two on a master plan steering committee. So there's three members from the planning board and then one member from a variety of other boards and then I think there's three or five residents at large that are on, that are on the committee. So it's been, you know, it's been determined, it was advertised, you know, people were, you know, considered and interviewed some and then, you know, the, the committee has started. You know, they've met twice and then so far, they'll be meeting a third time on June 12th and then I might as well go into the update on that if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
And then, and then Ju, so the steering committee's gonna meet earlier on June 12th in the evening and then June 12th is the first public, all their meetings are public, but sort of the first public event where it's, I'm calling it more of a workshop or charrette, but, you know, where we're anticipating, well, we hope, you know, that we have, you know, maybe at least fifty residents that, that will attend, so. And that's being held at the middle school.
Okay.
And that's six-thirty?
Yes, that, the, the committee's gonna meet at five forty-five and then the, the public participatory workshop is six-thirty to nine.
So Kathy, if, the fifteen-member board, if, if someone from one committee that's appointed to that board can no longer sit, then they replace it with somebody else, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we will have a little changeover because there was a changeover in the Board of Selectmen, so there'll be a new member of the Board of Selectmen on that committee?
I, I don't know if they've appointed, I haven't been notified yet, I don't know.
They have not appointed liaison.
Okay, so they're probably doing that at their next Monday's meeting.
Have they not appointed anyone yet?
Well, Bill Pantasis was the appointee from the Board of Selectmen. I, I don't know if they're gonna keep him as, as their representative or if somebody knew. I, I don't know. I actually will be at that meeting because I have to be there for another agenda item, but I, I don't know what they're gonna do.
So is it possible to find out then what JIS was, how it's set up? Just because it seems if it's a twelve to eighteen-month project, to keep someone that's no longer on that board, who's taking a spot from the board, seems like.
Well, honestly, it's not something that I have an issue with only because originally we were trying to make it one or two members from the planning board. We added a third because there were three people who were very, very interested in having it. I still feel as though the board is more than adequately represented by the two members that we have, so I'm not personally inclined to advocate removing George from the position because he does bring a certain viewpoint to that committee that a lot of other members of this board may not bring. But having said that, I think that certainly we can look and see if it's a requirement that we have him removed or ask him to step down and if he does, I would just ask that maybe I take the, I'd be afforded the opportunity to speak to him about it before we just oust him all of a sudden, on TV.
Of course, it's not the way we should do things.
And also too, the, the meetings are, they're open to the public. I mean, anybody can attend, you know, Anthony's been attending those. Any, anyone can attend the master plan steering committee meetings. I mean, so far, the, the meetings have been a little more structured where, you know, the consultant has had a definite presentation for both of those meetings. You know, always with a public meeting versus a hearing, you know, there's the opportunity for the chair to say, you know, we're not gonna take in any, you know, comment other than the committee members because it's just what fits on the agenda. But, I mean, they are, for, for anybody that's watching and for the board members, I mean, anybody can attend those meetings.
Right. And I think the point of having someone from these committees on it is that you go back to your committee, so I would come back to you guys. Like Anthony will come back to us regarding CPC and say, here's what's happening on CPC. I just wanted to let you guys know, do you have any feedback, right? You would do on your committee. And that's why I'm assuming, that's why I asked the question, if someone stepped down and there wasn't anyone, like in the Board of Selectmen, if there's no one on the Board of Selectmen, I'm assuming they'd want to have someone on there to bring back the feedback of what's going on. We do have two people already who are gonna be going back and forth.
We already have two.
Right, and so I just think it's important from each board to have somebody on there.
Okay, thank you.
Election of officers, the chairmanship and the vice chairmanship of, every year are up for grabs, so I would nominate myself, I don't think I'm allowed to.
All right, we'll nominate Teresa for the chair, if you'll take it.
I will, if, if that's okay with everyone else.
Do you want to be chair, Amy?
I know, thanks.
Okay, how about the, you guys?
Okay, and I would suggest Michelle continue to serve as the vice chair unless somebody else wants the vice chair position. No, okay. And then we've already scheduled our next meeting and the next ZBA meeting is June 26th?
There, there won't be a meeting.
There won't be one.
Um, we don't, we didn't have any applications filed by the deadline nor, you know, we always give, I shouldn't say it on TV, but we always have a little wiggle room of a couple of days and nobody has filed since then. If I can just get you, just because it's easier for me to schedule people before the design review and, you know, coming before you, would, would you be able to decide on an August date? You know, if you're, sort of looking at if you're gonna stay with July 17th as the third Tuesday, just kind of to even it out, looking at the third Tuesday in August? Which I don't know what the date is, but.
Twenty-first.
How works.
But again, I, you know, it's, it's wide open, so.
Any, any conflict on this end?
I'm good.
Okay, excellent.
August 21st.
Okay. It looks like none of us are taking vacations.
I know, it's, usually this is tough to decide what. Okay, so that's.
Okay, so we finished an entire agenda.
I just, oh, one more thing. You didn't ask me.
You are no longer chair of this committee, we are retracting that vote.
Okay, Amy.
We always need to check in with Amy at the end.
Well, I just think everybody should be aware, there isn't a ZBA meeting this month, but there was gonna be, how do you say, Kathy, tridebi or tridbe?
Tridebi.
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 Right.
Hearing, it's been moved to July, but it's still before our next meeting.
What date in July has that been moved to?
Well, the, if you want to speak, you have to have your letters in by July 3rd and the meeting's July 10th.
At six.
I saw that today.
Is that here?
Six o'clock, not seven.
Is that gonna be here?
Excuse me?
Is that gonna be here?
It's in this room.
It's in this room, okay.
I have one question in regards to that, that meeting because that's before, so that's hazardous waste and it's before the Board of Health. But then when we talked about hazardous waste before at Bartlett Street, it's, we discussed that it would come back before the planning board, so what's the difference between those two events?
The, do you want to take a, okay. Well, I just heard him, like you were gonna start.
I saw you starting to talk, so I had a sigh of relief.
So the, the difference is, if there's, if a new project is coming into town and they're located in a groundwater district, groundwater area one, two, or three, and they either need a special permit or it may require a variance, then that, that gets hooked into the site plan review process and that comes before either this board or the zoning board, depending on, you know, who has the permit granting authority. The, the Tridebi site is a site that's been operating as such since about the mid nineteen seventies. I'm not sure of the exact date. So the, in order for whether it was Tridebi or if it was a restaurant that was there or a, I don't know, you know, a, a, any kind of use. If it's a, if it's an existing use and, you know, it's, it's done. It's, it's already either been before you or pre, you know, dated the site plan review process. I'm not well-versed in, you know, Board of Health and DEP site assignments, but the reason why this particular one is before the Board of Health is because the, the company itself that has been there and is operating is looking for a, a different type of license from, that requires the Department of Environmental Protection. And through, through the Department of Environmental Protection, it's, it's the Board of Health that is connected to that. A lot of the Conservation Commission has, you know, a separate area with DEP, the state agency, and then the Board of Health. So from what I understand, it, the DEP is, is. So from what I understand, the DEP is, they're applying for a site assignment, tridebi is applying for a site assignment. So it's not, they're not adding to the building, you know, they're not adding square footage, they're not adding parking spaces. That's what would kick something off, an existing use to come before you if they were changing significantly and they met the thresholds in our zoning bylaw that kick off why they would come before a review board.
What about the change in use? It isn't non-conforming to non-conforming? Because aren't they changing what they were doing? Weren't they storage and now they're doing trucking? I mean, their new name is the hazardous waste trucking facility.
No, it's all, it's just, it's...
It seems like a substantial extension of use because they're going from eleven hazardous waste codes to five hundred and fifty-two.
I mean, that's why they're going before DEP, that's the appropriate board. You know, everyone, everyone has a place, you know, whether you're before the Conservation Commission or ZBA or Planning Board or Board of Health or, you know, another licensing board, the Board of Selectmen. So there isn't anything in the zoning that, that kicks off, that, I mean, that kicks a threshold that would bring a use like that back...
So it's not considered a substantial extension of use?
No, it's a, it's, you know, they're, they do hazardous waste today and they're gonna do hazardous waste tomorrow. I mean, it's...
But they're trucking now.
And that's what they've been doing.
It's a trucking facility.
Does increased traffic kick it off or no? No. No.
It seems like a different change.
Can you add that to a bylaw or no, you can't? No. No, okay. It's already a process that's set up with the state, you know, that, that's, again, why they're, you know, but we can have the Board of Health come in and, or I can get some information from him, but I mean, it's, it has nothing to do with the planning board or the zoning board of appeals.